All right, I'll call to order and then we can do that. All right, guys, I'd like to call us to order. It is 7:04. If you could rise and join me in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
And if you could please join me on a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Thanks, Brian. All right, I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th.
So moved.
By Keith, do we have a second? By Ms. Redda. Do we have any discussion, changes, errors, any edits? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented? We're unanimous, thank you. I would likewise entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 30th deliberative session.
So moved with changes.
Dan moves with some changes, so I have a second. Second by Ben, what do you got, Dan?
I believe the meeting was adjourned at 7:17, not 7:07.
A seven-minute meeting?
No, a two-minute meeting, because it didn't start until 7:05. It was around 7:17 or, I thought it was around 20 after, it was a 15-minute.
No, I would agree with you. I would agree that it's likely a typo on the 07. Ben?
I was not in attendance at that meeting on the 30th.
All right, so we've got Ben and Jenny who were not in attendance. So we've changed the adjournment time, and Ben and Jenny, any other changes or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Six, opposed, abstentions, two abstentions, thank you. Thanks, guys. All right, we have a correspondence folder, and the correspondence folder, we have two substitute reports. I also do have, this is, solutions for increased security in New Hampshire public schools. Did you want to speak to that, Al, Brian?
I'll speak to it during superintendent's report.
All righty. Commendations and good news.
Here at the high school, we have a few things. You mentioned the student council is kicking off the canned food drive that they do every year on Thursday, December 5th. That will last until the 20th. They usually do a great job, there's lots of competition between classes and classrooms, and they usually end up raising a lot of food and money to the local food pantry. The art club jewelry sale's happening on December 5th, 6th, and the 13th, in the afternoons up until 7:00 PM, right in that first art room, A1, and that's always very impressive, too, make a lot of great stuff, jewelry and all kinds of stuff. The children's Nutcrackers playing this Friday and Saturday night at the theater here, and that's our first ballet, I think, and that's kind of exciting. And the athletics department, Steve Fallon, is working on getting involved with Operation Hat Trick. He did a little presentation for us at the last hat trick meeting. It's this, it started at UNH, and it's a fundraiser for veterans services, and it donates, to donate hats to soldiers with head injuries, baseball hats, and the, some of the spring teams will be involved in having these days where they wear the hats to raise awareness about the cause.
Awesome, thank you.
I can go next. Maple Avenue, our student council is starting collection for a pajama drive. We donate pajamas to the Warm from the Mill Yard project, and that will be from December 2nd to 20th, and we are collecting new pajamas, children's new pajamas of all sizes during that period. Our parent-teacher conferences will be held this Friday, December 6th. And on Saturday, December 7th, the PFT will host our annual holiday breakfast from 8:00 AM to 10:30 AM. There'll be the typical breakfast fare, and Santa class will be there, so there'll be the opportunity for pictures with Santa. That's it.
All right, thank you. For Mountain View, we had quite a bit that went on, we had our annual food drive, where we, the students brought in over 1,600 items. One of the things that helped is that one of the eighth-grade teachers had a food-for-food, so if they brought in canned goods, then they got a ticket to go into a raffle where he would buy them lunch, and then they could sit in the cafeteria and have like this little fancy lunch that he bought. Friday, at our teacher's workshop, we're gonna have a soup kitchen. This last year went really well, the teachers make homemade soup, and then we put 'em out, and we all get to try, and we give a $5 donation, and then we vote with these little beads of like which one we like the best, and then they get the golden ladle, and all the money that we raise goes to the food pantry. We had our annual turkey trot, which we changed a little bit this year, we had a running and a walking path, and the top three runners in the fifth and sixth race, and there was a top three in the seventh and eighth, we got them little trophies, and they enjoyed smart food and water from MVP after the race. We had our anti-bullying week last week, I think it was, or, no, the week before, so two weeks ago, and Brown Graphics donated an anti-bullying banner for us for the students to sign, and most of our students signed it, and we're gonna just find a place to put it. Eight Two adopts a veteran. For the past five years, Team Eight Two has collected money and items from Manchester's Liberty House. For every dollar they raise, it equates to $20 in the soup kitchen for veterans. To date, they have raised $485, which translates to $9,700. If anyone wishes to make further donations, they can contact Lisa Nelson, and they watch a video, and they usually have a veteran come in and do a presentation for the kids. Our upcoming events, The Princess and the Princess got postponed till tomorrow because of the storm that was supposed to happen last week, and that's at 7:00 PM. Trimester One is, we're having a pep rally soon to kind of honor all the good things that have happened in the first trimester. We're gonna have our first spirit day, which is Ugly Sweater Day, which is gonna be right before vacation that they're starting to get really excited about. And the last thing that I say, which is really exciting, our first student-run newspaper has come out, it came out on Wednesday of last week, and the kids were really interested, we actually, one of my classes, we read some of the articles, and they actually, we have one about the stamp to bullying, which this girl, Lizzie, was bullied, and she has a disease that no one knows about, and they don't even know what to call what she has, and the kids were like, we wanna see her, we wanna meet her, like they were really enthusiastic about the paper, so I brought a few copies if people wanna see it.
I'd love to. Thank you. Do we have any other commendations or good news? I wanted to say that over the weekend, I went over to St. A's, and I watched the Mountain View Middle School hockey team take on Bedford, and I also watched a little bit of the varsity game against Bedford, they had the middle school, they had varsity JV, and then alumni game over at Sullivan Arena. Some great sport going on, some great spirit, the kids all, just excellent sportsmanship, and I hope if you guys get a chance, you can go show them your support. I also did want to add to the breakfast for the PFT, if anybody is looking for pancakes and sausage and all kinds of good company on Saturday, it is, it's a lot of fun to go out and just give 'em your support. Last year, a lot of just people from the community at large came and showed them support, it's all good stuff, so it's definitely. Anybody else? All right, public comment, do we have public comments this evening? Okay, I can just have you come to the table, if you can state your name and your address for the record, and I just wanted to let you know, too, that we typically limit our public comment to three minutes, okay? I do my best, but we like to.
Okay, I am the same.
Keep it there.
Well, my name is Gaby Benner, and I live on 12 Drew Free Street in Gothstown, and I'm here to speak about the budget. I'm a common taxpayer, and as many taxpayers this past year, my taxes have gone up again, okay? The average tax has gone up between 350 to $700, and I'm asking you to please be reasonable in the budget process, to please, you know, look out for the taxpayers, because our budget has gone, I think, way out, way out, it's, it's getting outrageous. I know I'm going back into time now, but back in 1992, we were funding both the school and the town for 19.8 million. Now, the requested budget this year for combined is 64.8. Please remember that we, as a nation, we're in debt right now, 16 trillion dollars plus, okay? We've been compared to a state of depression, okay? The Great Depression, we're compared to the Great Depression, and if you're looking at per capita income, okay, we're pretty much making the per capita income that we were in 1992, okay? According to the records, back in 1992, the average annual income for people working in the metropolitan areas was about 27,051, $27,051, that was per GovNews release, and now 17 years later, okay, 2009, I know I'm a little back in my date here, about, what, five years? But in 2009, per the New Hampshire Employment Security, the capita was only 27,748, so it's only $700 difference in about 17 years. As you can see, much of us earn pretty much the same as we were 17 years ago. Things are bad, you know, our jobs are gone overseas, and things are pretty bad, and if you're making a wage of $15 an hour, we're considered an okay wage, okay, and we're pretty darn lucky for making 15 bucks an hour, which averages out to $31,200. Now, why is our budget so high and out of control? It's because of salaries, I think. It's not because of that extra box of pencils or crayons, but we're paying outrageous salaries. We offer too many benefits, we offer retirement contributions between the town and the school, some people get 10% for retirement, some get up to 27% for retirement. One family could, could be, well, for the family health insurance, health insurance has gone out the roof, okay? We, as a town, can be contributing between 22,000 and 25,000 dollars just for health insurance for one employee. We offer cash backs, okay? If you don't take the insurance, we give you 55%, and if you, 55% of the single rate, that's what we give you. And if you decide not to get a cash back, but you want it to go in your retirement plan, well, we'll do even more than that, we'll pay 85%. So we're not really saving any money if you're not taking any insurance. We even give insurance to some part-time workers that work only 20 hours. We give extra bonuses for people that have been there for a long time, yearly bonuses that could be running from 850 to 3,250. Besides that, it looks like we even give retirement lump sum figures of 5,000 to 20,000 dollars once a person retires. And we offer insurances to retirees, which makes the pool go up. We give tuition reimbursement of 50%, and then once someone gets their degree, we give them a raise for getting that tuition, for getting their degree, we give them a raise. And per year, I think we give about 3% or more for raises. We pay for people's cell phones. I mean, the sum of these salaries, I'm not gonna mention any names, but town administrators, school principals.
Excuse me, I'm really sorry, but we're at four, so I need to ask you to wrap up, please.
I'm at four minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry. But the, some of the people earning between 70 and over $100,000 without benefits, and if you add benefits to that, that could be another, an extra 30 or 40%, so please, you know, be reasonable, help us out, because what's gonna happen, you folks are gonna tax us out of our homes if it continues, you know? We just can't afford anymore. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment? All right, seeing none. Standing committee reports, policy review committee. Anybody? Policy review?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do. Our last meeting was November 25th. I would like to encourage members to attend. We had a lot of members who did not attend, and it made it difficult for us to give a quorum, so I'm gonna plead for that. The main thing that we did discuss was, Lozwood also shared a, what's known as a common practice in Hampshire and Gothstown, specifically about what they call red shirting of kindergartners, which is basically allowing an extra year for maturation, for maturation before the child is enrolled in first grade. What she discovered was, there is an RSA in New Hampshire, 1931, that says, any child who turns six by September 30th has to attend a full-day program. So we legally cannot allow a child who is six by September 30th to stay back in kindergarten. We must put them into first grade because we only offer half-day programs for kindergarten. Which brought it to our attention, so we obviously need to correct our policies. The policy we looked at was JEB, but we also discovered that we needed to look at policy JEBR, IKEA, and IAKER, and we started reviewing them. We have not come forward with any recommendations, we plan to finish the review of them after December meeting, and then at the following school board meeting, have recommendations for a first read on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. P and C.
The P and C committee met this evening, we talked a little bit about the two award nomination processes, we've got two awards coming up, the cornerstone and the dream catcher. The cornerstone.
Dream keeper.
What's that?
Dream keeper.
Dream keeper, oh, not dream catcher, obviously, I've got little kids. The cornerstone is intended for faculty, staff, and volunteers, and it's for person who's demonstrated advanced, who has shown advanced student, or promotes advanced student learning, and the dream keeper award is to recognize people or organizations that have gone the extra mile and shown exceptional service to our school district. So the deadline, the nomination form and information has gone out to principals, the committee, however, has suggested that we extend the deadline to allow more time for nominations, so we're moving the deadline from December 13th to January 15th, and this information will go out to the Gothstown school community for nominations. We also talked about other ways to get information out about what our schools are doing, and we'll continue to explore different avenues for sharing information, but for now, it's the award that we're focusing on.
All right, Redda, thank you. St. A.
We had a meeting last Monday, and we had an overview of what's going on in our schools, by all of the schools, and it was just an amazing, as usual, I'm always blown away by that meeting, and because I was listening so intently, I didn't take a whole lot of notes. So, we, a lot of really good things are going on, our scores are improving, we have a lot of interaction, team building, teamwork going on in our schools, where we have teachers and administrators jumping in, mentoring, one person will go to a course, a seminar, and come back and disseminate the information to everybody, and it's all on their own time, it's a lot of money that we're saving the district out of the extra work that everybody does in getting together, and they're really excited about doing those kinds of things, which I think is great, too. I don't know, MC, do you have anything you want to add to them about our meeting?
I think one of the big emphasis was on professional development, that was a lot of, Phillip, would you agree, you were there as well, that was a big component of what administrators talked about, about consistent and persistent professional development.
Yeah, a lot of, lot of good things, continuity.
It's always, it's always refreshing, interesting, and educational to attend that meeting, it's something we've done every year now for four or five years, and, and you always come away with a global impression that people have, all of our buildings and the administrators and the faculty have directed the ship in the same direction, and one building delivers students in good shape and in good order to the next building, and the development continues. So that's always an integral piece of what we hear from each one of the buildings and across all buildings. Professional development is a significant piece, and probably the easiest way to, to talk about it is, when you hear about what's going on in the buildings, you hear about a deep level of engagement by students, and that same bit of engagement also exists for our administrators and for our faculty. So they're modeling the things that they expect in our classrooms themselves. There's a high level of engagement in terms of professional development, so anytime we're doing something new in a building, it really is disseminated by the people who are owning the change. So if there's a new program, if there's a new text, if there's a new assessment, whatever it may happen to be, it's, it's rolled out to people who then are rolling it out to their colleagues, and it's, it's a terrific reminder to sit in front of those folks and to listen to and appreciate the level of engagement that's occurring in each of our buildings and, and across curriculum. If, if you were to be able to listen to it, you'd hear a great deal of conversation around reading and arithmetic, but as you listen closely, what you understand is that the dialogue around those two areas really permeates all of the subject matter areas and all of the schools. I could go, literally go on and on and on and on and on, and we'd be happy to do so.
We believe you, Phillip.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, but, but one of the things that, that we attempted to do is to record some of this, we're gonna have a look at the record that we made of the meeting and try to figure out a way that we can deliver it so that more people can hear from our administrators and get a keener understanding for what's going on in some of our buildings and how they all link together.
And another thing that impressed me is how Maple Ave and Bartlett are really working together to make sure the kids have the same experiences coming out of the elementary schools going into Mountain View, and a lot of our coursework and curriculum is developed 7 through 12, so that Mountain View, 7th and 8th graders, their teachers are working with high school teachers to make sure that that transition, as far as curriculum goes, matches up, so that there's a flow that goes from one school to the other that continues, which I think is hugely important, and, and new for Bartlett and Maple Avenue to really have kids coming out with the same experiences, which I think is great.
It's also important to note that Betsy Holmes from New Boston was, was a member of the audience, was an active participant, and we, it really provided a great opportunity to, to discuss transition, the things that are happening in New Boston that are then integrated into the kids' experience here, and so it's, it's an important part of an ongoing dialogue between two districts about how students are being delivered into the middle school at either 5th grade or 7th grade, and then advancing forward.
If I can just add real quickly, I'd like to thank MC for her leadership with the C and E and all the work that she's done, along with Mr. Farley, Mrs. Dougherty, and all of your principals. We have principals in this district that are as well-versed in curriculum as, as any principals I've ever known. They're a really impressive, remarkable group, so I'd like to recognize and thank all the folks and the teachers. Your, your teachers continue to do the professional development, they continue to, to bring the great classroom instruction to our kids every day, so thank you.
That's wonderful, and I look forward to hearing more about that as, as that comes forward. That's excellent.
I just, I just want to say, one of the greatest aspects that we have is the stability of the administrative team across the SAU, and they're, they're well-oiled machines, they work together, they collaborate, and they show up, and they walk their talk, so you don't always find that.
No, no, for sure you don't. Thanks, MC. All right, Budget Committee. Budget Committee meets again this Wednesday for the town side, and then, of course, we pick up the school budget again on Thursday at 7:00. We should be finishing up the very last bits of any of our budget presentation, and then enter into deliberation. There really hasn't been deliberation on either the town or the school yet, but certainly given where we are in the calendar, that is sure to come within the next few meetings. A and F.
I have a unanimous recommendation to bring forward a manifest, so I move the manifest of $1,289,546.33.
I moved by Dan, I have a second by Phillip. Care to share more information, Mr. Cludian?
I think we all would love to get a little bit more.
Yes.
Payroll, taxes, and benefits, $824,200. This includes the credit for health insurance, so the, the net was $146,000, without the credit, I think it would have been about another $400,000, roughly an additional $400,000, so that $400,000 is a credit. Some SPED activity, so special education services, Boothby Therapy was about $9,000, that's November services, that's some speech, occupational therapy, psych, co, psych, college, psych, whatever. Crotchet Mountain, October services for two students, $46,600. Maria Jordan, who is the teacher of the deaf, $5,355, and Safeway, which is transportation for October, $6,000. General expenses, the big ones, Gothstown Truck Center for $99,525, that's number three of 10, so you're gonna expect to see seven more like that. Portland Glass, with Portland Glass, do we pay them $11,129, that's the balance for, remember the windows we did for the Honeywell thing? We financed $32,000, it costs a total of $43, so we just paid in the difference of 11, because that's all we put into the financing contract with Honeywell. Rico, the copier lease for November, $7,400, and the December assessment for SAU 19, $107,500. If there are any questions, I'm sure Mr. LaBour would love to get them. Something hard.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you very much. Elementary facilities, how you making out, Ray?
Not so well, Diane. No meeting has yet been scheduled.
Okay, all right, thank you for continuing to plug on, I, I really do appreciate the efforts you put into it. SAU executive officers, superintendent search committee report, committee met last Wednesday, and determined some organization, as far as constitution, with board members, the board members, member of the administration, members of the public. Notices have gone out soliciting applications from members of the public. We don't have another meeting scheduled just yet, but we are working on focus groups at the assorted schools, with an eye to, to getting more information about what people are looking for in their superintendent. The expectation is the meetings would start picking up, the focus groups will be taking place now in this month, and then as of January, having the meetings start to pick up, so definitely ads are getting written and approved and sent out, and it can use moving forward. I think that sums it up, Keith?
It do. You did a great job, thanks.
You did a great job, thanks.
Well, the other thing is, I, I don't know if, if it's been announced that we were going with the Georgia School Board Association for our.
Perhaps it has not.
I think it was the last.
Was it last, was it last meeting?
I couldn't remember if we did or not, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that's who we're using.
Yep. All right, this brings us to the superintendents' report.
Just a few things to share with you this evening. Had two early graduation requests that had been approved, one for Madeline St. John and one for Alicia Orella. Madeline is graduating at the end of her junior year, having met all the credits requirements. And Alicia is graduating at the end of her first semester. So those are just notifications for the board. Consistent with past discussions that we've had, Mr. LaBour and I will be meeting with the gentleman from Tri-Town Soccer this week. Specifically, it's Hugh DeBruel and Mike Biscon. Frisco, thank you. And we will be continuing to work on a memorandum of understanding, a letter and agreement between the school district and Tri-Town, given the new structural arrangement of the Lions Fields. Mr. Busquet had shared some information with, with me. Likely, the board remembers the young man, Alex Reed, who was hit by a car right by the Bartlett School. His mom has set up a fund to support an 18-month-old child from Goffstown with leukemia. Just thought that was a great example of someone paying it forward, and she's trying to extend to another family that's facing a hardship much like hers did. I thought that was very honorable. The document that I sent around in the correspondence folder, I just wanted to let you know, there's a new document that just came out last week, Effective Solutions for Increased Security in Public Schools. Really, there are three areas of focus. One is surveillance, one is access control, and the other is emergency alerting. So this information will, will be shared with our SAU Safety Committee, and we will continue to work with the principals regarding safety. As the board is aware, this is one of our highest, absolute highest priorities in our schools. We also, I did brief the board that we had Greg Champlin, who came from the, from the state, the Department of Safety, and we conducted a tabletop exercise. The last one specifically was, we did a mock scenario of a propane tank leak behind the high school and all of the elements, the logistics that would come into play with that kind of a scenario. We've scheduled two more events for Mr. Champlin to come back and work with our administrative team to continue to brainstorm different emergency scenarios and to, to work through these tabletop exercises. We did so with Goffstown Fire and she, and Police, the Chief O'Brien was there, Dan McDonald, the fire chief from New Boston, was there. So it's been a, a good example of us continuing to focus on safety. I wanted to bring that to your attention. Regarding legislative updates, there are final drafts being completed and bills are moving on to legislative services. Specifically, there are a number of bills that we're watching right now. One focuses around the privacy of student information that's been submitted by Neil Kirk from Ware. It's our understanding that this has to do with information that's shared about students. There's a bill that has been filed by the Disabilities Rights Committee, or Disabilities Rights Center, excuse me, focused on the restraint of students that we're watching. There's a bill requiring a policy focusing on suicide prevention. And lastly, there are a number of bills focused on the common core state standards that we will monitor and watch closely. One that looks to delay implementation of the common core state standards, and another one, as we understand it, that would require local votes at the local school board level. A couple of updates regarding the high school. The last time we met, there was a question about the matching of the repair work of the gym floor. I wanted to let the board know that we did make inquiry, and the entire gym floor is being sanded and repainted. So that has been, has been done already at this point. And on the 27th, I believe it was the 27th, the last big storm that we had, we were very concerned because of our pattern of water intrusions here at the high school. So I just wanted to share a few things that we did with the board, and I'd like to thank Mr. Aggett and his team for the hard work that they did. We put in a pretty large sump pump into the catch basin by the back middle section where the water intrusion had come. We sandbagged and put heavy plastic over all the exterior doors that are affected. And we had a custodian who worked overnight that night and was here on site monitoring the status of both the middle section of the building and the theater. I'd like to, I believe it was David Moody, but I don't, I didn't have confirmation of that, but David's a, a great custodian of ours at Maple Ave. Given the level of concern that we have with the water intrusions, we were pretty nervous. And so a, a number of us were here and, and checking on the status of the school, and some of us might even have been here over the course of the evening. So it was a, a good effort from everyone, and we've learned, we continue to learn important features about how the water intrusions are occurring. This storm was supposed to be about three inches, which is the same as the last one, so we weren't sure what kind of a scenario we might face. Continuing the theme of gym floors, we have a new issue at the gym floor at Mountain View. The one section of the floor is showing some coupling of the hardwood floor of the boards, so we're gonna have that, Mr. Aggett was there today, this is very recent. And we will hopefully have some more information regarding that, but at this point, it looks like there may have been some kind of damage that's just recently occurred, although we haven't had any, any water coming through the new roof or anything of that nature. So we don't know what that is, but we'll keep you apprised of that. Lastly, I just wanted to point out that our next meeting on December 16th, beginning at 6:30, this is a little atypical for the board. We have scheduled a non-meeting at 6:30, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that time, and I understand, Mr. Cludier, that that will be an impact on A and F. I believe Ray had some ideas about how we might.
We're gonna postpone, we're not gonna meet that evening, we'll just go live with the manifest.
Okay.
Living on the edge.
Living on the edge.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to old business. And follow-up on the New Boston Athletic request, as you remember, at our meeting two weeks ago, we had a member of the public here inquiring as to the athletic policy. So I did just wanna give a moment to check in and, and see where anybody was with that.
If I may.
Yes.
We had a discussion at A and F, and it was a unanimous consent to bring forward to the board that we go forward with Tri-Town with, I think the words were status quo. Tri-Town, sorry, with the contract.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things. This isn't about Tri-Town, Dan.
This is New Boston Athletic, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, what, everything I just said, if that wasn't on there, you had mentioned something on your report, and I thought it was there, maybe this will be other old business.
Yeah, and this was just following up on, on just the, the public comment.
So much for living on the edge, huh?
That, that anybody, just following up to see if anybody wanted to take action, what the thoughts were.
Oh, that's the New Boston Athletic.
This was Catherine Osha, the parent who came and spoke at your last board meeting.
I guess there are a couple of questions that I still have. If, if there's an interest in having an active discussion or in looking at the policy at all, because our non-cut teams are competing against other schools, one of the concerns that I'd have is whether or not there are any implications to somebody participating on a team when they are not a member of the district and not attending the school, and how that could affect the competition against other schools. And I don't profess to know the answer to that question, it just seems to me that it's a question that should be included amongst a, a variety of other questions if we're gonna examine that issue. So if there's an interest in exploring policy, please check that off as a question I think we ought to at least address.
Okay. Suzanne?
Yeah, I guess I just have to say again, I don't know, what time does New Boston's school get out at the end of the day?
They actually get out pretty early. Your, your concern last meeting about, about the kids being able to get to Mountain View in time to leave for away games or for practices, I think New Boston might actually be okay with that. They get out at 10 past 2:00. So they, they get out quite a bit earlier than Mountain View. I actually, I think that wouldn't be a deterrent for the New Boston students.
Right.
They get out early. They start early and they get out early.
I mean, the policy doesn't stay that they have to be Mountain View students. It says they have to be in either six to eight or five to eight, so I, I don't understand very much.
I remember when we spoke about it in terms of Dunbarton, when we talked about it two years ago.
Oh, that's right, it does say that, sorry.
Yeah. But.
Waiver, you can give them a waiver.
Yeah. This has come up before several times, and I know even though it came to the board as people really were interested and wanted it to happen, when it came down to happening, nobody ever came forward with it. So, I mean, it was like a thought, but nobody really followed through from New Boston to sign their kids up and do it. And I think, I think the biggest thing is, it's a, I agree with Philip about the NHIA and whether those, those students would be eligible to play on our team and, you know, the last thing we want is an ill, yeah, a player, an eligible player. So that the, the team's record doesn't count and stuff. So I think that's the huge question to ask first.
Again, I, I don't know if NHIA applies here.
I think, I think it's another.
I'm not sure what governs.
Yeah, I think it may be the middle school.
Competition piece of it, but as it exists, non-cut sports are open, and that may well be because they don't operate by the same rules. And just, just to make a point, when, when Dunbarton raised this issue a couple of years ago, New Boston did not participate in the discussion of the issue. I think at the time, it was because there wasn't a level of interest in the community. And, and now there is.
I, I recall as well, the discussion with Dunbarton is our conclusion was the non-cut sports, but not in, in the cut sports. And I remember there was quite a bit of investigation that went in, although my recall cannot help explain what that, that was at this point. Ben?
Just a question as far as liability, if the five through eight, how, how would that cover, who would be responsible if anything should happen to the New Boston students if there was an injury? Who, who assumes the liability? And also, who assumes the transportation from point A to point B? And then getting back from point B to point A?
Well, I think a lot of this discussion we are likely ill-prepared to have. And what really is at play here is if we refer it to, to our policy review committee to investigate the logistics further, or if we do not. Like, we don't, our board right now, at this particular moment, does not have the information that we need to make, uh, uh, to take a vote one way or the other. But the question is, is what the tenor is, if it's something that we wish to, you know, refer to P and L Policy Review or, or not. Suzanne?
I'm just wondering if we should entertain a request from individual parents, or if we should get a request from the New Boston School Board?
And you make a good point, this did not come through from the board.
Right. I mean.
Well, it, it sort of started that way.
How did it happen?
But, well, it's, it's interesting. There was a discussion, if, if I'm reading through the minutes, there was a letter that came from a parent in Dunbarton to, directed to the New Boston School Board that, that raised an issue, or that they got, it may be that they got a copy of it, regarding whether or not students were on equal footing when they came from one of the sending districts to Goffstown in terms of being able to participate in sports and whether or not they were being treated fairly and equitably, and if merely being a member of the Gofftown, Goffstown community created an advantage over somebody from a sending district. It looks as though that probably got dealt with summarily, but that is where the conversation looks to have started. So this has been an active conversation, it looks like, at a couple of board meetings, and it simply came to us because the parent moved from having the discussion at that board to sending us a letter.
Right, but the New Boston Board has not formally contacted us to ask us.
No.
To consider, which I think is what Suzanne's point is, that that this request is not coming from the New Boston Board.
Right.
They're not asking us to do this.
Well, if we start acting on requests from individual parents, we could be opening ourselves up to all kinds of future requests.
Ben?
Well, is this something that maybe we should, the policy review, just look at this and have the information, since there seems to be some interest being demonstrated? I don't know whether this is something, you're right, we have no, we don't have enough information to make a, a decision. And I'm just wondering if this is something that should be looked into to have these questions answered and then make a, a more informed decision.
Rhonda?
It, it seems like if we had this discussion in the past and were interested in, in making the provisions, that, you know, there, there was some interest on the table to, to move forward with this, regardless of whether a student showed up or not. And it seems like, you know, item number three in this policy kind of opens the door a little bit, and, you know, regardless of whether a student shows up or not, you know, does the board wanna have a policy that allows for this or not? And that, I, I think, getting back to your question, should that be looked at and make a decision one way or the other on how that gets moved forward?
I think I have Keith next.
Yeah, as Chair of the PRC, I guess I, I feel better if it was a formal request from New Boston as a school board. I think it's a little bit of a slipper slope if we start taking individual parents and asking them to make requests like this and make changes to our policies. I think our relationship is with the school board of New Boston, and I, I would feel more comfortable if they made a formal request, and if they did, we could certainly put it on the agenda for January on PRC.
I would agree with that. Dan?
The question I have is, do we have a policy on how we refer policies? No, it's a dang serious question, because, I mean, if, if I wanted a policy reviewed at one point in time, I think I had asked for it, and it, and it was kind of a consensus around the table that said, hey, go look at it. And, and I'm not sure if, if that is something, because I, I don't think I'm in the, I may or may not be in the majority on this particular request to review, because I would like to see something more formal come across before I would like to ask the policy review committee to review.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're on.
That's what I'm saying, I think something formal needs to come from the Boston School Board for us to give consideration.
I agree too, because it didn't come up in the area agreement discussions at all. So, you know, it's not something that's been brought to the table officially or anyone showing any interest.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that's properly part of the area agreement, because it doesn't, it doesn't really govern.
No, but we, we've had a lot of talks about a lot of different subjects, and it, it wasn't anything that ever came up either, you know, as looking into.
Okay. So we have consensus? Okay.
Can I ask?
Thank you very much.
For clarification, would it be the board's pleasure for me to take your direction back to the New Boston Board, or would you like me to just leave this at this point?
I don't think there's any direction. I think it's something, if, if that's something that they wish to pursue, then they would be able to do so.
If they wanna talk to us, they can talk to us, but I wouldn't ask them if they wanna talk to us. You know what I mean?
I think we probably have an obligation to, to share with them that one of the residents that came forward with this request.
I'll touch base with Mindy, she's already aware.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're aware. I'll touch base with Mindy, I have no problem with that. And certainly I'm tempted to do so.
Not, not for nothing, but that actually, your, your collective suggestion was the suggestion was that it, it is sort of a board-to-board issue. Is, is this something that the community and the person of the school board wants to have on its hands? wants to have on its table?
Okay. All right, guys, thank you. Moving on to the December fourth election discussion. As you all know, having looked at your calendars, a December four is this Wednesday, so we've got two days away. We have our special election. So there is much that has been done. Very great thanks to Denise and the other staff at the SAU. Thank you, Denise. Jim Raymond, Joanne Duffy, Ger- Jerry Ag- his, Jerry Aggett and his staff have been working very hard.
Kathy Ball.
Uh, Kathy Ball, yes, indeed, thank you very much. We do have this schedule that I do want to send around, just so we've got it in writing. We've all been talking about our schedule. Jenny, I know you and I had kind of talked about where we could fit in that at GHS. We also have Denise's printouts. I just want to confirm are for me to share that way.
Just a quick question. So, this has the two polling places and then a notation on the bottom that said board members will need to be available after seven to count ballots. Is it safe to assume that in, if you don't object, you've agreed to that part, the counting ballots part? Because that's what I'm going to assume.
And I will have to say again, and I guess I'd ask for board direction on this for myself. As budget committee rep, I have budget committee. And I do recognize that my school board work does need to trump, but I'm also doing school board work when, when I sit at the other table, so it's, I'm gonna be walking the line as, as far as going to the budget committee and, and not-
Well, you can probably be deliberative too, so.
What's that?
You can probably be deliberating at that point where you probably need to be there.
It's quite possible. We are not scheduled to take up the school budget that night. It is, it is a town size. You know, so we do, I do have, you know, some, some bit of flexibility, but I do also like to be an active part of that committee.
A quick question.
Yes.
It doesn't make any difference to me where I'm at. So should I check both?
What, Denise, give direction on that, since this will ultimately-
So, so, I don't care, i- if you need a body at GHS, I'll go to GHS. If you need a body at Bartlett, I'll go to Bartlett. So should I include availability for both of those?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Denise, what you're looking at is, is you are looking exclusively for what everybody's availability is-
Correct.
And we'll piece it in together.
I, I know that it's been said before, but I can't thank Denise enough for how much work she's done on this special election. It's, it's Herculean.
She's the best.
It's just unbelievable how much time she's spent doing this one. Thank you.
All right, so we are- Absolute, thank you, MC.
Yeah, Megan has taken care of the, the food component for the supervisors of the checklist and other folks so that- We've essentially shut the cafeteria down for a day of school for twelve hundred kids for breakfast and lunch.
I know, it's huge. This is, this is a really huge undertaking. One thing that we are going to need is after the booths are up, there's going to be a certain amount of sign hanging that they need to do. The booth should be up and in place by four o'clock tomorrow or four thirty, four o'clock. We could use some hands to come and, and hang the signs if anybody, does, is anybody going to be available tomorrow?
What time?
Well, I mean, they go up at four, so we can start any time after. That doesn't mean we have to be here at four, we can come at seven. I'm just giving us the window of what we need to do, and that's going to be in both locations. That's going to be in Bartlett and that's going to be at GHS.
I'll, I'll give you time work, I'll give you a call and you let me know what you need.
I'm in Worcester tomorrow, but, you know, once I'm on the road, I'll let you know and just tell me where you need me.
Okay, Hank has said he's able to. Is anybody else able to join tomorrow?
Did they give us a map where Kathy normally has the signs mounted?
Uh, Jerry Aggett has a map.
Jerry Aggett has a map, which would be helpful. We, we should have the tape and the, or pushpins and all that other kind of stuff. Super glue.
I can be available after six if you let me know where to be and what to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I'd be available much before five thirty, six o'clock as well.
Sounds fair.
And I can be available after seven if I can bring the kids.
I think it would be a kid-friendly, and that's kind of my plan.
How do you open up one door?
Get some people who are here.
And they don't charge a lot.
No, and they know how to use tape and, and can follow the-
Paste.
All right.
Crayons.
What else has not been addressed on us that needs to be addressed? Have we got it covered?
We've got it covered on that. If you just are here to put that stuff up so that when they open it up at seven o'clock the next morning, we're all sitting there running around and-
Don't read the time and estimate for, I mean, I know we have a fair number of signs, but we're talking a half hour of work?
To hang the signs?
Yeah.
Depends on many of their-
I've never done it, that's the thing, like, I've never done it so-
There's a sign in every booth, instruction to voters so that they, so you can see it so they can mark their ballot. Then there are like about maybe six or seven other signs that you have to put up. It's not a whole lot, and I don't know if you guys put what's not required, which are like little directional signs for handicap, for instance, because if we have handicap park in here, that kind of thing, that's not required under law, but it's something that we had talked about, or Kathy may have done as a, as a help to voters in the past.
Yeah, I just don't have a sense for, for what we're looking at, like, what the volume of-
Jerry, can I know all the signs needed? Denise has some printed up as well. If you look at your sheet over here, it pretty much tells you what you need to do and how many you need. What did you do about parking since we have school that day? Jerry has taken care of that. It's, um, we have handicap parking, which will be in the six spots here at the beginning. And then right next to, in front of the doors, you'll have some more parking there that will be restricted for voters.
I believe isn't Jerry, uh, having a lot of the teachers, staff park in a, in a different area to leave parking spots open out front?
We've, we've, we've asked the faculty at the high school to park over at Parks and Recs-
Oh.
-and walk over here or to drive together if they can so that we can free up a whole section of parking that we will cone off so that no faculty park there, so that there will be dedicated spots. And I, I believe we're putting out signs for, for the voters so that there'll be dedicated spots. Similar occurrences at Bartlett. And as the board will recall, Mr. Busque had the brilliant idea of looking at grade level field trips. So Bartlett is essentially going to be empty for, for the majority of the day.
The faculty's vehicles will still be there.
Faculty vehi- vehicles will still be there. We, we did ask them to park in the back. They can park on the playground. The whole hot top area next to the playground will be fair game for parking because there will be no kids having recess there. So I, I think we'll be, I think we've addressed it to the extent that we're able to.
And like I say, there're not going to be lines of cars.
No.
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 Bring a book.
Absolutely. All right, so that sign and sheet is going around, so we're getting that finished. We'll have a group of people here tomorrow. Sounds like we're available generally after six o'clock. With tape in hand and signs, ready to sign away. Okay, and, um, and then Wednesday's the day? What's that?
Bring your own tape or do you-
We have tape.
We have tape, we have signs, it's, it's simply getting them where they need to be.
Okay.
All right, you good, Suzanne? You look like you have a question coming.
Nope.
No, you're good?
Yep.
Because I know you've done this before. I know this is your thing.
A few times.
All right. Moving on to new business, we have Kevin Farley here with us this evening for a brief teaching and learning presentation. Who am I missing?
MC, I believe, is also joining Mr. Farley. If I can maybe provide a brief context. One of the things that, that Diane and I have talked about is asking some of your faculty to come and provide brief presentations to the board on some of the teaching and learning elements that we wanted to highlight at each of our respective schools. I think too often the board doesn't get to hear directly from your administrators or your teachers. So this is the, the first of what we, we hope will be a whole series of brief presentations for the board focusing on some of the innovative practices and the current instructional models that we're, we're proud to, to share in, in the Goffstown schools. So with that, I'll welcome Mr. Farley. Thank you for being here, Kevin, and, uh, MC is here to, to provide input as well.
Well, thanks for inviting me. I'm really enthusiastic about what I want to talk about tonight, so I'm glad that I'm the first one that's able to do this. And if you were at the C and E meeting last week, you're going to hear a repeat, which I hope is just as good. I want to talk about our, our math labs. We instituted something last year. We were trying to boost student achievement in mathematics. And we were aiming at a midsection of students that were making it by, but we want them to learn better and do better. So we instituted a geometry lab and an algebra lab. Let me tell you a little bit about it. They started, uh, as I said, last year, we started with two labs in algebra and two labs in geometry. And what we did is we looked through the rosters of students who were scoring twenty-fifth percentile to fiftieth percentile on the NWEA. So we're not looking at the absolute bottom. They have a lot of support services already, and we're not looking at the top because they seem to be doing very well in the classes that we are providing for them. And our goal was not to have a special pull-out service where kids were separated from their peers, but to offer support so we could get more kids in with their peers. So we set up a couple of sections. What we did is we had a few teachers, we pulled some sections, we increased a little bit on some of the sections so that we could offer them as, as sections with certified teachers to do the job. And what we did is we pulled students, some of whom were in the, the special education department in a pull-out math class. They were strong, they were, they were the strongest of those kids. We didn't eliminate the special education math classes, but we reduced the numbers. And we also pulled other students who were not special ed students. They were regular ed students as well. So it's a mix, it's about fifty-fifty. It, it varies depending on the year and depending on the subject matter, but it's, it's about fifty-fifty, regular education and special education. We send a letter to parents, we invite the students to participate, and for the most part, the parents and students have been very enthusiastic about it. And what we do is we use what I call a reteaching and pre-teaching model. What that means is that students are, are scheduled into regular math classes and geometry and algebra. And they have a second section with the lab, so they have ninety minutes every day rather than ninety minutes every other day in mathematics. The reteaching and the pre-teaching works. What happens is the, the lab teacher collaborates with the, the geometry teachers or the algebra teachers. Oftentimes, they will observe the classes. There's a lot of email going on, there's a lot of faculty room conversation going on. There's an exchange of, of work and assignments. And what we do is we prepare students for their next class tomorrow, things that they might need to know before they walk through the door. And we also try to address any areas where they might still be confused from yesterday's lesson. So a typical class might look like an opener. There might be some practice in some computation skills or other just basic skills that are required to be successful in the algebra or the geometry class. Then there's some individualized time for homework. We're working with students, the numbers are small, there's about fifteen per lab. So we get, we get to see every student on a one-on-one in a ninety-minute period. You can group them. But anyway, we work on homework assignments to be sure that they're completed, but not just getting the homework done. How to use resources, what does the textbook look like? If you have this question, where are your notes? Are your notes in good order? How do you use your notes in order to address this? How do you help each other? So a lot of skills besides, we're, we're not just saying the geometry and the algebra louder this time. We're, we're, we're doing a lot of other things to prepare students so that they are successful. We do test preparation in there. We know from the teachers, from consulting with the, the regular geometry and algebra teachers, when they're having tests, when they're having quizzes. We see their study guides, we work with them on that, so we're preparing them to do better on the, the tests in the regular ed class as well. This is a model that Mountain View as well has, has instituted this year. So we are aligned and-
Jenny's smiling, she knows.
And I'll, I'll tell you, it was, to start off, we had a little bit of grumbling the first year from students. Why am I here? Why do I need this? And it now has become the cool place to be if you're an algebra or a geometry student because your homework is always done. You always have the support that you need. You walk into classes understanding rather than trying to hide in the back of the room. It's been very successful. Now, I just, I put together a bunch of numbers and you know me, normally I will come with, you know, a half an hour worth of graphs. I, I promise I won't do that, and I did it on yellow paper to remind myself not to do that. But before we started, so in eleven and twelve, there were no labs, and the failure rate in these courses, now this is rough because kids move in and move out, they move up a class, they move down a class, but roughly, roughly eight percent of our special education students, I'm sorry, about eight percent of our algebra students were failing and about thirteen percent of our geometry students were failing. That's all students. There was no lab, so I counted them all. Now, this year with our lab, I only have a quarter, but two percent of our algebra students are failing. And nine percent of our geometry students are failing, which is a significant reduction. It really has gone down. And, and I'm looking at the numbers, for example, last year, none of our, our lab kids in, in, none of our special education students in the lab failed geometry last year. Every single kid. And there were, there were twenty-three percent of that lab with special education, and every single one of them passed geometry last year. Now, just going down a few numbers, this year, as, as I said, we have a nine percent geometry and a two percent algebra failure. That's a big reduction. We'd love to get it to zero. We can't do miracles, but it is a big reduction.
Kevin, would you also speak, because this is impressive as well, about how you've changed which classes are offered this year relative to pre-algebra?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Well, and actually, I, I probably could have started there because this was in response to that. Generally, every year we had a handful or so, maybe two small sections of students on Team One who came in and were in pre-algebra math. They were in this group of twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh percentile students and, and they just weren't prepared to do algebra. And even on Team One, which is a sheltered team with very small class sizes, we started them in pre-algebra. Now, if you do the math with pre-algebra, if you have pre-algebra and then algebra and then geometry, you're just not going to get the math that you need in order to be successful on either the kneecap in, in the fall or if, when we move to the smarter balance in the spring, you, you won't complete the sequence. So this year we don't offer pre-algebra. And it was a bit of a risk. I crossed my fingers and said, how are we going to do this? And we put these students who would normally be in pre-algebra into Algebra One with their peers, with lab support. And it's working. Right now, as I said, this year we have a, two percent of the students have, have failed, and that's, that's really a small number of, of kids. You figure two percent of fifty-something kids in the lab, so it's, it is working. We are supporting them and they're in with their peers. Our goal was not to have them pulled out in a special separate class. We want them with their peers, and it, it appears to be working. We're pretty happy with it.
And by eliminating the pre-algebra, it'll also be easier for them to meet their math credit requirement.
Yes. Yes, it will. And it also gives us two sections of a teacher to work the math lab as well, so.
Is it, is it fair to say that one of the either anticipated or unanticipated benefits is that the pacing in the class with the lab remains about the same?
It does. I, I can give you an anecdote. Last year, one of our teachers had one of her sections that had an awful lot of lab kids in there. And I thought, oh, boy, because like I said, twenty-fifth to fiftieth percentile kids, this is going to be a bear to work with. And her response to me was she loves the lab, it has made her job so much easier because kids are prepared, they're getting their work done. They're, she's not in attending meetings and parent meetings and chasing kids down and giving incompletes and giving retests. Kids are coming prepared. So it's made the regular ed positions easier. The, the regular classroom, regular education, regular- regular classroom positions, e, their jobs easier because kids are prepared.
So there's no reduction in the material that they're covering-
No.
-in Algebra One, there simply are supports for the students who benefit from the support.
Right.
And at Mountain View, it's a bit of a different model, and yet Mountain View students have mathematics every day for about a fifty-minute period?
Yeah, and the math lab is every other day, it's actually the odd days. So today was an even day because it's a second, so tomorrow they'll have math lab. And I see it on the student's side, too, like, it's, I pre-teach them or I go over test things with them, I go over their homework with them, but I see the students, like, I've had some of them in summer school or I've seen them before, and they would always tell me, like, you're an awesome teacher, but I don't like math. And now I'm seeing them come to me and they're like, I got a ninety-four on that test. I'm like, you earned that because we went through and went over some of the things that usually trip them up. And they're the ones that their hands are raised in class more often because they know the material now. So I think from a student point of view, too, it's, they actually, maybe not enjoy it, but they're a lot happier. And I actually didn't have anyone grumbling, like, coming into my class, they, they really didn't know what it was at first, but they're like, you're going to give us time to our homework, right? I'm like, yep, we're going to make sure that you understand it. And then I get to check it because there's so many few kids that when they're done their homework, I can say, all right, let's go back to these two, we were really struggling with it, let's go over on the board together. And so then they get that reinforcement instead of just having a quickly glance at their stuff. I can really see what they know and what they don't know and what they have to go over.
I think, too, this also speaks to, Jenny, we were talking before about how we're working really hard to make sure that there's a common experience for Bartlett and Maybell and students. I think when you, you hear this, you can see that the high school put an instructional practice in play that was working. And because we meet grades seven to twelve and these conversations happen, really good things transition up and down in between the two buildings.
And I think it's great, too, because whenever you can make a student feel like they're being successful and they know what they're doing instead of, you know, like you said, hiding in the back of the class because they know it and I don't, that's a terrible feeling. So I think that you give them that help so they can feel successful and, you know, give themselves a pat on the back for getting a ninety-four instead of a sixty-eight. You know, I think that's, that's huge for student success.
That's noticeable. That is no, you know, I, I, I talked about the failure rate, maybe that's not the place I should have gone to right, right at first. It, it is very surprising to me as I go through the, the rosters to see the Bs and the As of, of these students that are in that, that middle, that lower middle quartile that they're, and they're getting honest passing grades, they're not passing with the sixty-five and the sixty-six, they're in the eighties and some in the nineties. So as a, as a model for instruction, it, it's not remediation, but it is the support and it is working.
And there was one other takeaway that, that I got, when you were talking about the, the breakout labs, the reteach and the pre-teach, it wasn't simply on, here, let me show you how, how to solve your problem. It sounded like a part of that is, and you could probably speak to this well, is looking at where the student is at when you meet them and identifying what the issue is. So it may not necessarily be an absolute weakness in the subject matter area, it may actually be, how are you taking your notes?
Right.
How are you retaining material? What are you using for resources? And those things cross the curriculum regardless of whether or not the help is coming in a math lab. Is that fair?
It is, it is, because many of those skills are lacking in this group of kids as well.
And that's study skills without saying study skills, right.
I think this is a really good representation of innovative instructional practices. By raising the expectations and eliminating two sections of pre-algebra, Kevin was able to reconfigure to provide this layer of support. If you think about all the supports and services we give to our top-end academic students, AP classes, honors classes, and then we have a lot of supports for special education students, this is a wonderful way to provide extra support for some of those kids who are, they're not special education, but they need supports, and I think this is a really innovative program that I think is great for kids.
We were also able to reduce the, the applied geometry and the applied algebra courses, which are special education courses. They, Barbara does a great job keeping her curriculum aligned with the regular courses, but she had two of each and now she's got one of each, and we're supporting those kids, they're in with the regular stu, you know, the regular old algebra and geometry classes and they're being successful. So it's been working.
Good stuff. That's terrific.
Well done.
I'm, I'm very happy about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Glad you came, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right, New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly is scheduled for January eleventh of twenty fourteen, that is a Saturday, so we do need to determine a delegate to send, send out and represent Goffstown during the assembly. It is fairly a full day, ten to three. I've been a couple times. I think it's a, a great way to spend time. Is there anybody here at the table who would like to go up this year? Again, that's January eleventh.
I recommend you include here.
Actually, Dan, you went last year, didn't you? Was it last year or the year before?
I don't think I ended up getting there. I, I, I did volunteer last year, but I-
Bet you didn't make it.
I-
I don't think I made there. I thought we were both there one year. Dan, you and I were there at the same year for something.
Yeah, was that what the delegate assembly was?
I think it was a delegate assembly.
Then I did make it.
You don't think it was orientation? Because we only can send-
It may have been orientation.
We can only send one delegate, we can't send two up to this. It's a one delegate.
Maybe it was orientation.
But it would have been when Dan was a new board member in your chair.
Right.
Yes.
I am looking out for some reason.
Bretta, it is a good, it, it's a good way, Ben, this is, it's, it's good stuff if anybody is interested.
That's a lot of issues, I think, but it, it, it's worthwhile.
Yes.
I have a potential conflict, so I can't commit right now, but I'm always interested in recent-
Do you want to let us know?
Sure.
I think because once we give the name, there comes a point where we can't, like, we can't send a sub, I, we can't call that day and say, you know, Bretta can't go, but Diane's going to go, but we can find out what the, um-
I mean, not only would I wouldn't be able to get this immune, I have a commitment in the name. You know, I could miss the first hour and a half, two hours.
You know, I am happy to go. I just want to give somebody else the opportunity and, you know, to, to go do that, it's certainly no, no skin off my nose, but, um-
I may have missed a lot of these attachments, because I said a lot of attachments and I don't know if I looked far enough down in my email. They were all there, Denise?
Yeah.
I didn't look far enough in the email. When's the date to notify in there?
Did we have enough for everyone?
I'm not sure. Maybe the user couldn't download it, so.
Probably something on the-
I don't see the date, I don't see where they gave us the date.
Okay.
I think it's a two-month.
Why don't we do this since we're going to-
Oh, it says Monday, January sixth.
Where does it say that?
Um, right there.
Um, I don't have that document.
No, that's the date for notification.
Oh, notification.
All right, so you know, let's come back to this in two weeks if we can, if we can check our calendars and whatnot, that's perfect.
So that's January, Saturday, January eleventh?
You betcha.
Ten to three.
You betcha.
Here's the kicker, I think they're going to feed you.
They do.
They do.
Yeah, you got lunch.
Oh, I'm in.
All right.
I showed up in just that lunchtime, you know?
All right, guys, so we will come back to this in two weeks, based upon any observations of schedules, et cetera. In the meantime, we will discuss the GHS graduation date.
This year, we are looking at a graduation date of Wednesday, June eighteenth at Sainé's again. This is based upon both the high school calendar and schedule as well as Sainé's availability. There is a, I believe, a women's hockey game that same day, which is consistent with what we went through last year, so we think it's, it's, it's definitely within our scope to be able to have graduation that night. And they do have, I think, limited availability of dates available.
Okay.
So we wanted to bring this date to the board for your consideration and, and if it was the board's pleasure to move forward, we'd like to go ahead and book that date and, to work with Sainé's.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't? If it's in the calendar, okay? As far as dates goes.
It does. It does. It's a Wednesday, sometimes it, it's been the board's pleasure to, to try to stay away from the middle of the week, but again, we're continuing, continuing to have the, the ceremony at Sainé's, we're limited based on what their calendar allows.
On the eighteenth gives everybody the right a number of days and, and whatnot, so they're good to go.
And the parents were okay having midweek?
Boy, it was really well-attended for any of you that, that were there.
It was.
I mean, the, the place was, was packed.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the great things about having it there is we have no limitations. You know, for example, when we have the Mountain View promotion, we have to limit the number of tickets we can give out. That's the reason a lot of districts have gone to venues like the Verizon, so that if you want to bring every cousin, every aunt and uncle that you have, have at it, we've got plenty of room for everybody. I don't know that we have quite that same level of seating, but certainly that's one of the benefits of, of using that facility. And Sainé's is, is great to us, it's a great relationship. That would also be the day that the board would cook lunch for the graduating kids. So I think also looking at your schedules in terms of board member availability to be able to be there cooking, Megan will be there again, I'll be there cooking, MC doesn't know it yet, but she'll of course be there cooking as well. So that, that's a kind of a full day for, for a lot of us.
Yeah.
But it's a-
It's good stuff.
It's what it's all about.
It's good stuff.
It's what, it's why we're here.
Okay.
So if it's the board's pleasure, we'd, we'd like to move forward with that?
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we have GHS graduation at Sainé's on Wednesday, the eighteenth of June.
Oh, I think that.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Jenny regarding graduation at Sainé's on June eighteenth. We've got a second by key, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you very much. We have some field trip requests, United Nations and Annie?
We do, the first one, the United Nations trip, this is a trip that Mr. Romaine has taken his students in the Great Decisions class for the last six years. He's given me some detail, he's taken up to a hundred and ten students to New York City to tour the United Nations. They also have the chance to, they visit Times Square and they, and I think that's the majority of the day, those two stops. Students do pay for this, there's a entrance cost into the United Nations and there's a cost for the buses, it's about fifty-eight dollars per, per student. This is a repeat field trip but is out of state.
Pursuant to school board policy, of course, the repeat field trips do not require a motion unless we wish to stop them.
I go on a trip, too, so I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam.
Great trip, I think.
It's just been a great day at the United Nations.
You can, but you can't, the, the tour is only an hour or so.
Yeah, I don't know if you can, you know, high points, just the high points.
All right, I ask any motions, so I hope that they have a, a great and safe trip. And we have another trip for Annie?
We have a trip for Annie. This is, this is not a specific repeat, but Mr. McKernan has done a trip like this many times in the past. I don't believe that there was a trip last year, but he did share with me that they've gone to a number of other Broadway-type presentations. And this one is on Saturday, the fourth, going to-
January the fourth of-
January. So this is going to New York City and going to a matinee performance of Annie, including Times Square and dinner at Bubba Gump's.
Nice.
I believe they have shrimp there.
They do.
They should, they should.
I'm psyched, right.
This is a two-hundred-dollar cost per student, it is on a Saturday.
And that is raised by the students, of course.
Students pay for that themselves.
Okay.
I actually, I actually got a communication today saying that they were canceling that because they didn't get enough interest.
Okay, that's news to us.
It, it came out from Josh DeRocher, I believe.
Okay. You know, I think it's before the board, so we should, we should move forward with it. Um, my feeling's also where this is not clearly a repeat field trip, I would like to go ahead, par policy and get board approval specifically for this trip to Annie.
I'll make the motion to, to let the kids go on the trip to Annie on January fourth.
I have that motion from Jenny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second in five, Ben, do I have further discussion?
One question, which course is sponsoring this, so to speak?
Music.
McKernan's music, yes.
My, um, kids went on band music trips and they were wonderful, an absolutely wonderful experience, so.
A trip to Broadway as well, what a phenomenal experience for these, these people, absolutely.
Especially if you can get dropped off at a bus really close to the door.
Ah, the walk's not bad.
All right, guys, all in favor of approving the field trip to Annie on the fourth? I see you're really unanimous, thank you very much, wish them a good time and a safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, field trip requests are taken care of, we have a parent request.
We have a parent request of a current third grader at Bartlett. Parents are moving to the village side of town in early December. I actually think today might be their moving date, and they're requesting permission for their child to remain at Bartlett for the remainder of third grade. The letter does not specifically speak to fourth grade, so I'm assuming that the intention would be then for this child to be enrolled at Maple for fourth grade. There's no mention of the next year. Parent does indicate that they will provide transportation. Recommendation would be to support this request, I think, at this, at this point in the year.
I'll second it with a caveat that, that they understand they must provide their own transportation, and if they want to keep the child there in fourth grade, they will have to come back with another request.
Yeah.
Right. I thought the motion was just for-
It is just for this year.
The remainder of the school year.
Yeah.
Because if the motion is for the remainder of the school year, we don't need the-
I just said, I want to make sure they're aware that if they want to do that, they must.
Agreed.
All right.
Just so they understand what our policy is.
So, do I have a second?
I think it's the-
I do have a second from Keith, okay. Any further discussion on the request? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you very much. All right, do we have a resignation for co-curriculars?
We have a resignation, Amy Stillpin for basketball, and we have a replacement for her already, which is Catherine Goodwin.
All right, so we'll take the resignation, and then we have, we have a recommendation for nomination.
Correct.
I just want to be clear that we don't need a motion for co-curriculars, so.
I believe we're good, just notifications.
Can I ask this?
I think we should accept a, a motion on the resignation, however.
That's what I was, I'm kind of that, um, motion by-
Second.
Philip, second in five. Jenny, all in favor?
That's a slightly new position, correct?
Yes.
The, um, other co-co-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to do the, I'm trying to just take care of the resignation-
Oh, I know.
And then we can move forward to our co-curriculars. So I do call a vote with all in favor of accepting the resignation, we are unanimous, thank you. Moving forward to our nominations.
Yep, we've got nominations here for the remainder of our winter sports, and a fair number of these are volunteer positions, so these would, um, these nominations are notification for the board. But at this point, we've gone through, I believe, all of our winter sports are all, have been before you. You've got two hockey volunteers, you've got Mr. Garrity for Mountain View Basketball, Catherine Goodwin at the high school here for basketball, we've got actually- Um, we've got, actually, uh, softball as well is included in here with Samantha, Samantha, and Scott Turgen for another ice hockey volunteer.
Okay. Are any of these new people, or...?
I don't, I, I don't believe so. I have their information. I believe these are all folks who have, um, worked for us in the past. I think Catherine Goodwin is new to that position, but has coached o- other, other things for us. And I'm not entirely sure about the volunteers.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of them seem familiar, so...
Yeah, Chekemash seems familiar.
Yeah, Chekemash and Matt Fosher seem familiar. I think Scott Turgen seems familiar. I make the motion to, uh, to, to support the nomination as presented.
Alright, I have had a motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
Second, then.
By Jenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Very unanimous, thank you. Do you have student intern?
We have a student intern from NHTI, which is a new one for us. This is a technology intern. Um, I think we have had, um, a fair number of folks who've come from NHTI, and Mr. Gerolamann has, um, been working closely with them. And I think the board was aware of Jelaine Beekman's resignation about a month or so ago, and we've continued to work with NHTI, so I think this is, um, continuing in that vein. So that's a notification.
Okay. Any student teachers?
Student teachers from Plymouth State, SNU, and Keene State, for a total of five of them, as you'll see. Um, working two at the high school, one at Maple Ave, one at Mountain View, and, uh, excuse me, three at the high school. So those would be notifications as well.
Uh, quick question on student intern. What is, what is Gary's anticipated, um, time commitment? And what do you see anticipating of the interns to be provided?
It's a hundred hours, is, uh, what I read here. And he will be doing... The requirements of the contract with NHTI is the goal of a senior internship is to enable the student to apply acquired IT skills in a real-life work environment. During this hundred-hour minimum internship, the student will accomplish the following objectives: demonstrate ability to work in a team environment, develop and apply troubleshooting skills, submit thorough documentation of tasks accomplished. Um, traditional students are expected to apply skills learned in the classroom. Students already working in an IT environment will work on projects unrelated to their normal duties. So it looks like he's doing networking. And I'm quite sure that I can't provide any more specific details beyond that.
You mean you can't give that highway explanation? No, I was just asking, 'cause we just had never done anything with, uh, the actual, uh, NHTI.
No, this, I think this is a new one for us.
Okay. And that's, um, that's starting spring of twenty fourteen for both of those, for the interns and the teachers?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what are we looking at for this request?
Um, it's just a notification. Oh, the new positions request?
Yes.
What we have, uh, for the board tonight are two requests that we'd like to bring to you for your consideration. The first is for a part-time special education secretary at Bartlett, using grant money, using IDEA money, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act money. Uh, what we've got here is a situation where we have our current teaching staff, um, spending a disproportionate amount of their time doing what I might define as secretarial work. They're filing, they're calling parents to schedule meetings, they're sending, um, information out in the mail, et cetera. And it's taking away from time on teaching and learning. Bartlett is the only school that does not have a special education secretary. Um, arguably, this is inequity in, in my estimation. We have about the same number of special ed students at Bartlett as we do at Maple. Maple has a part-time secretary. Glen Lake doesn't, but Glen Lake has Gail, who's wonderful. Um, the anticipated time for this would be to look at, I believe it's three and a half hours a day, for a total cost of anticipated at, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This would be for a hundred and twenty-four contract days, with an anticipated start date, um, of December ninth, if the board were to approve that. This would not be a position that we would be likely able to fund next year. But at this point, we, we do have the, just shy of six thousand dollars available through grant money to fund it for the remainder of this school year. So this would be a position that, at the end of the year, um, we would need to be revisiting.
So the IDEA grant money, is that earmarked? Anything else? Where, where did that come from that we have this availability?
Really, the, the reason we have availability, um, with the IDEA grant is we haven't had our... Most of our IDEA grant is up in salaries. It's entirely, almost entirely consumed by salaries. We have money available because the teachers have not had a raise in two years. So we haven't had an increase in the salary costs. Um, and we had a, a couple of changes in benefits that essentially freed up a little bit of money. This is, uh, this is something we've been wanting to do for a long time, and we were, we have the money available to do it for the remainder of the school year. Um, it seems like it's not directly focused on kids, but allowing teaching staff more time available to spend with students, um, I see as a tremendous benefit to kids.
Yeah, I, I have a three-part question, if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
This extra, well, the available six thousand dollars approximately, what would be your second source of using it if you didn't get this approved? What would you use it for?
The six thousand?
Yes.
I think we'd probably have to reevaluate the priorities and, um, and look at what our needs are. I, I don't know that I'm entirely sure what we'd do with that, Keith. Um, we have technology needs, we have a number of laptops that we've bought with IDEA money over the years that, um, specifically, we have two laptop carts for special ed students that the computers are, at this point, very old. They're not on the replacement cycle of the lease at the elementary, middle school, or high school level. That's probably what we would target, because at this point, we've got a, a number of computers that, that aren't working right, which has reduced the number of, um, computers we have available. So we'd probably look to, to replace some of those older computers.
Do you have a specific candidate in line for this position?
No.
Do you have to go out?
Yep. And because it...
I'm very concerned about, we do it this year. I understand the inequity, and I understand that we're actually putting more direct time for teachers and students together. But I'm concerned next year that we have no way to fund that.
I, I, I would concur with that. Um, sometimes we do get some, a, a small increase in the IDEA grant. If we had a benefits-eligible position that had a change in benefits, we might, we might have some money available. If we were to have a new teacher contract, that's gonna raise the salaries, which is gonna greatly impact the IDEA grant overall.
Yeah.
We, we understand, but we're really looking at this as a, as a pretty dire situation at this point, that you've got this tremendous need for administrative assistance support for those teachers.
I, I would just like to see a, a, a possible solution for next year on this issue. You know, I'm concerned that, I understand the need, um, but I think the need has been ongoing, and...
It has been.
I would, I would like to hear a solution for next year, possibly.
My thought, Brian, I, I don't think most people here understand the amount of paperwork...
Oh, the paperwork is tremendous.
...that goes into special education. It's not like regular classroom teaching. It's a whole different story. And I think if people understood exactly how much time gets spent on that, instead of things that could really help kids, um...
And the paperwork is all time-sensitive. There are specific deadlines and requirements around notifications and responses and, and the like.
I think Keith makes a great point. Um, we, we would, um, feel badly to start something now and not be able to continue it next year. Having said that, um, we ask our administrators and trust our administrators to prioritize things, um, clearly understand those priorities, and then make recommendations. Ours is to, um, approve the recommendation and ask thoughtful questions. Um, having a recommendation before us that solves, um, an immediate and, and apparently critical need, because it's been presented as a priority, um, seems to me to be something that we ought to take advantage of, and we ought to heed the recommendation that's before us, with the admonition that if you can figure out a way to keep it going, because it adds sufficient value to become a priority... Try to end at that target, 'cause, 'cause I think, I think it's pretty clear that you'd get support for it.
I, I think we need to make it a higher priority for next year, now that...
Do we have a discussion? Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Do I have a motion from Philip? What is your motion, Philip?
Uh, to approve the request by the administration, uh, to expand up to fifty-seven ninety-seven, uh, to provide part-time secretarial support, uh, through the use of the IDEA grant.
Okay.
That's looking good.
I have a second by Keith. Do I have further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jenny, do I? I don't see you. Okay.
I'm...
Okay, so I've got one, two, three, four, five. Myself, so seven. Opposed? Abstention.
For personal reasons, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so Jenny abstained. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have an additional request for an educational interpreter at Mountain View Middle School.
We do, and I wanna be careful not to, um, share an awful lot of information to get into any personally identifiable information about students. But we have a new requirement to provide an educational interpreter, um, for a student who is deaf or hard of hearing. This is a new requirement for a new student. Um, at this point, uh, we're looking at this, this is kind of, um... There aren't a lot of school districts that have this position, and we're looking at this position right now. We've made contact with other districts. Manchester and Oyster River are two districts that we were able to find that have a similar position, and they have a, um, a range that they pay. Manchester pays twenty dollars an hour. Oyster River's paying thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. The closest thing that we could find to compare this to, um, there are certification requirements for this position through the Department of Education. Um, Kate believes our, we have a Coda, which is a Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant in New Boston, um, who gets paid twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. That's our best guess of, of something to be able to compare this to. These are IEP-required services. Um, so I think we, we would look to the board for your approval to, um, create this position. I will say that, um, if that weren't to happen, I'm not entirely sure what we would be doing, but likely, one way or another, these services are required. Um, so we would look to do them either through a contracted service, um, arrangement, or it could be an out-of-district placement or something of that nature.
Driven by the Goffstown student, right?
Goffstown student.
Driven, driven by the IEP.
Yes.
It needs to be met. I would make the motion to approve at, at, um... Again, I'm not sure that you can tell us absolutely what you're gonna pay.
I, I don't know that we can, and I, I will say, even with the approval, I'm nervous about finding someone to do this, because there seems to be a, a major critical shortage for this level of service, um, based on Kate's research. So even if, even if we have the position, I, I hope we're gonna be able to find someone.
I make a motion to approve, um, fulfilling of, uh, position, if you're able to find somebody. Um, and if I can come back with plan B.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ben. Do I have further discussion?
I do have a question.
Keith?
Is this something that's, would be better for us to outsource and, uh, transport the student, say, to Manchester or something? If, if they have an employee that is capable of doing this, or...
Well, um, I don't think so, Keith. I, I think both from a cost perspective and a quality of education perspective, my first preference would be to staff this and to provide the services this way. I think what you're proposing would be likely Plan C. Um, the, the program that the student would likely go to, and Manchester does have a program for this, it's about sixty-five thousand dollars for the program, plus the cost of the transportation. So it is a, a very costly program, and I'm not convinced the caliber of the other education would be commensurate with what we would be able to provide in-house.
How many hours a week does the, do they need an educational interpreter for?
It would, it would likely be the full school day, right.
And where would you plan on finding this money?
Um, I think we've already looked to Mr. Labor, and I think between our, our teacher turnover money and some of the savings that we've been able to realize, and energy is, um, where we've been able to, to target this year. We, we feel comfortable, um, that we will be able to, to fund this cost and, and really...
Without having to take away from some other pre-approved, uh, expenditure.
Right. I don't know that we have it in special ed. Um, we would look there first to some of our tuition lines if we might have some, some available funds.
How much you've come to the board, do you notify us that, that you can take it from out of the line? If it's over five thousand, you have to come to the board with it. So you've done so, so now you can finance it if it's approved.
Thank you.
But you've certainly looked into all the different options and have concluded that this that you are proposing is the most cost-effective.
We think this is the most cost-effective and best for kids.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table. It was seconded by Ben. Do I have further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you. Um, which brings us... To any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
May I just ask, do we plan to schedule to do the superintendent review?
Um, we have that in non-public right now.
Okay. I was just hoping to try to have it, but it's just a question.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we have it. Um, so seeing no other business, um, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public session for some RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, rolling two, subsection A, um, regarding...